I don't have to do that anymore, but yes.
Okay.
Yeah, they can just come in.
Down. All right. So I'm going to call this meeting to order. If anyone, please stand at seven o'clock. We're going to see the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
And if you'll all remain standing for just a moment, I'd like you to just think about and reflect on the 20,624 people who died from gun-related deaths in the United States since January the first. Of those 11,352 were suicide or other mental health issues. Thank you very much, and you can all go ahead and have a seat. All right. We are recording via Zoom, and the Zoom public is welcome to participate by remaining muted during the meeting and raising your hand when you wish to speak or ask a question. In public person, in public participants will be offered the first opportunity to comment and ask questions. The Zoom participants will be given the second opportunity, and we are being recorded via Zoom, and the recording will be uploaded later at the townships YouTube channel for viewing. Under the chairman's report, we have Community Day coming up very soon on June the 25th, starting at 5:00 PM. That's the Saturday. We're going to fireworks. The rain date is Sunday, the 26th, and we hope that everybody will be able to join us. The township will be closed on Monday, July the 4th, in recognition of Independence Day. Yard waste will not be picked up that week, so on July the 6th, please hold that waste until the week after for the July 13th pickup. And the board met this evening in executive session prior to tonight's meeting to discuss legal and personnel matters. Under public hearings, there are none this evening, and we do have Chief Bernard here to give us an emergency service report from Wego. So if you don't mind coming all in up, I have to tell you, Chief, I read those complimentary correspondence that you sent out this afternoon rather late in the day, and I was really, I was very pleased to see all of them. It was nice to read them.
It's very gratifying to get that kind of positive feedback from various members of the public. You know, you're doing a good job when you help people get through situations that they didn't want to have to call the police for, but we helped make it a little bit better for them. With regard to tonight's report, I'd like to start with some statistics. For the month of May, the total of incidents for all three townships combined was 1,051. In comparison to previous years, we are pretty much back on par with the calls for service being equal to what they were before the pandemic. With regard to year-to-date calls for service in all three townships, there was 5,020. In comparison to previous years, again, we dipped during COVID and we're back to our pre-COVID levels. Specifically regarding East Goshen, in May, there were 521 calls for service. Year-to-date in 2022, 2,534, and again, the same thing that holds true for all three townships also held true for East Goshen. The second thing I'd like to highlight is some of the community involvement events that our police department was involved in in the month of May. We gave a presentation to the Westchester YMCA Senior Social Club on avoiding frauds and scams. We conducted a visit with the residents of the Valley Youth House, dropped off Girl Scout cookies, and also donated gift cards to the residents. We participated in the Rust and Prom and Graduation Ceremony to ensure that all of the students had a memorable but safe events. We participated in the LifeSkill graduation classes for St. Peter and Paul and also St. Simon and Jude. And we had a meeting with the very first winners of the Junior Police Officer Program sponsored through St. Max's, and the two winners were invited into the police department where they took a tour of the station, crawled in the police car and played with some of the equipment that we use. The two young ladies seemed to have a wonderful time. We dropped off donuts to the teachers of the various schools that are in our jurisdiction in appreciation for all of their hard work. It was a challenging school year for them, and we also did some postings on our social media about topics like pet safety and vehicles and how to avoid becoming the victim of vehicle thefts. East Goshen did not, in the month of May, have any particular hotspots or hot trends per se, so I figured I would do a synopsis of overall what occurred. We had one attempted homicide and the subject was arrested, 21 disturbances, which is slightly higher than normal. One arrest was made for harassment, one sexual assault investigation, two threat investigations with one subject being arrested for terroristic threats, two DUI arrests, two drug investigations with an arrest for possession, two child abuse investigations, two theft investigations with one felony arrest for retail theft, which is rather unusual in East Goshen. And we had three missing persons investigations, two juveniles, one adult, all subjects located. So you can see we had a wide variety of incidents in East Goshen during the month of May.
Are there any questions from the board?
Chief, on the drug arrests, what was the possession of that the arrest occurred on?
I can't recall. Usually, most of our possessions tend to be possession of a small amount of marijuana.
Yeah, I was wondering about that. Now, I happen to have a medical marijuana card, so I'm cognizant of the laws. And I wonder about these small possession, very passive situations unless someone is driving erratically and has other substances in their system. The aspect of processing both resource time of the police officers and individuals who are probably not criminal types. So I'm just curious about the profiles of those and
I can give you more detailed information. I can provide it to Michelle for tomorrow, but generally, if you've read our blotters, you see that small amounts, we don't prosecute. This tells you that it was more than just a small amount for personal use and/or there were other circumstances. So I will get that and I will provide it to Michelle tomorrow so that she can bring it back to you.
Background would be great, Chief. I'd be curious about it, but I appreciate you sharing that. May I offer one more? And this is a really low, low on the totem pole, if you will, but the other week, and I don't have the date that last week it was, I didn't have the date, but I called Wego and reported that a a party came to our door soliciting. On a segue, the company is called Aptive or Aptiva. I asked him about the solicitor's permit, said he didn't have it. I said, what's this on you? So that's our company. But we have, it was, the gentleman was very curt. And then whizzed away on his segue. I did call the police, as you said, we should, but I did not have any follow-up or response to it. I said, it's not a big deal. I want you to know about it. The party's in the subdivision right now on a segue, but I did not hear anything back from it. There was a young lady that I called, not the 911 number, but the Wego number, and I didn't get her name. It was, I let them know who I was, and I said, this isn't a fore-alarm situation, but if there's a patrol nearby, it'd be great to, you know, let this individual know that they shouldn't be, you know, let alone the conduct or the, you know, the demeanor that the individual showed to me at least anyway. I think I was gentlemanlike, if you will, but they were, I thought, rather curt, so that's probably what prompted my call more than anything.
Okay, so it was the curtness of the person. With regard to what you're asking me now, are you asking me for an update on what we found with the investigation?
Well, if you found, yeah, maybe you made contact with the, I mean, that is the company Aptive, and it was interesting because I looked online and apparently their reputation preceded my visit because a couple of the things I saw were whether, back in the neighborhoods, again, no solicitor's permits on their segways and telling us about this and that, and of course, there were other things about their services, et cetera.
Is Aptiva an energy company?
No, it is. I'll spell it for you because I brought it up here. It is listed as A.P.T.I.V.E., Aptive Environmental Pest Control. MLM, whatever, is knocking on doors. They're out on their segways, coming to a neighborhood near you, ignoring the no soliciting signs, et cetera, et cetera.
The guys on the segways are pests.
Well, that's an interesting point. I don't have any herbicide or pesticide to handle that, but so it's not, as I say, it's low on the totem pole, but it's the kind of, you want us to report, and I didn't know whether there was a follow-up. Maybe there was an engagement and they ushered the individual out. Obviously, they didn't come to the township for solicitor's permit.
All right. I will make sure that, Michelle, I have that also for tomorrow's.
Again, it's way down here, but I just wanted to mention it to you.
Okay.
Thanks.
Anything else from the board?
No, thank you.
No, thank you very much for that executive summary. We really do appreciate it.
Yeah, that's nice.
Thank you. And I'll forward the complimentary remarks to everybody. I just didn't get a chance to. I was reading them on my way out the door, so. Thank you very much. I'll see you tomorrow at the commission meeting. And next up, do we have, is Grant, oh, Grant is here. Great. Grant, you want to come on up and give us an update on Goshen? You don't mind?
Hello. Hello, thank you very much. So for the month of May, we had a fairly typical month. Fire responses for the year are actually flat to the prior year. East Goshen numbers are still a little bit down for fire responses. They are creeping back up a little bit, but West Town and some of our out-of-district responses are kind of making up the difference for us. EMS responses, we are pretty much back at pre-COVID levels. We're up 14% from last year. Again, East Goshen's still a little soft. There's a couple of assisted living facilities that their numbers are down. West Goshen, Willowstown and West Town are up significantly from the prior year. Significant incidents from the from the month, I know we talk about automatic fire alarms quite a bit. We did have a call at 13:30, Westchester Pike on the 10th of May, which actually came in as an automatic alarm and turned out to be a trash fire smoldering overnight in a trash container in a warehouse there. So, you know, that's an example of why we need to be on point when we respond to an automatic alarm. We're looking forward, as I mentioned last month, we're looking forward to the fair. Things are starting to ramp up, so that's a sort of an all-hands-on-deck sort of thing for us, and it's hoping for as good a year this year as we did last year. I do want to compliment our EMS team. We had a call on Sunday on Cornwallis Drive for Chesapeake. They arrived with Good Fellowship, Good Fellowship's paramedic. They recognized the situation immediately as a STEMI, severe myocardial infarction. Time from arrival at the scene to arrival at the emergency room was 17 minutes, and they were in the cath lab moments later, and the treatments appear to have been successful, and hopefully it's a success story, so.
Was 17 minutes from the time of arrival to the emergency room?
Yeah.
And that's fantastic. How much time elapsed, do you know? While they were there at the emergency room, how much downtime did they have while they were down at the ER?
So the time from arrival at the ER to doing the 12-lead assessment was three minutes, and they were in the cath lab probably within five minutes.
What hospital?
Chester County Hospital.
Fantastic.
And Chester County is very good when they get something like that, and there's feedback, you know, good or constructive feedback or good feedback. They're very good at sending it out and identifying where we, you know, had a real success.
That's fantastic.
Yeah.
I'm going to ask you kind of an off-topic question, but it's somewhat related. So Cornwallis could have gone, so on Cornwallis, you could have taken that patient to either Chester County or Paley. On my street, how come they don't seem to go the fastest way? How come the ambulance takes 202 instead of Paley Pike to Paley Hospital every time?
I can ask. I attribute that to just their experience of traffic and
Interesting.
And most of the time now, we don't use lights and sirens.
So that's why you're going on the highway? You're just trying to avoid the traffic lights?
You know, stopping and starting and all of that.
Okay, that's fair enough.
The protocols now, we rarely use lights and sirens going to the hospital unless it's a true emergency.
Sure. Well, thank you. Does anybody else have any questions?
Yeah, Grant, I have one for you. Maybe you can look into it a little bit, or maybe you have a response right away. A great new digital information board at the Boot Road, Green Hill.
Very nice.
It's very nice. I see it every day because that's my neck of the woods. I'm wondering whether or not, and maybe you can, again, you may have an answer, maybe you can get back to us as you speak with your colleagues and whether or not you need to speak with West Goshen at all. But whether or not the Goshen Fire Company would consider allowing the township to be able to post some notices on that board. It's a great location. We have the other two spots. We just went through a chapter with getting the other two repaired, and they're operational and in good locations, but that's a great location, and of course, you have important messages to put up on that, but I don't know how the ordinance reads in West Goshen as to how many messages can be put up. I don't know any of the details, the frequency, but if there was room to be able to have the township piggyback with some of its notices, Community Day or whatever else, it'd be wonderful to be able to have a partnership there. I just wonder if you could take it back to your colleagues and see whether it's something you guys would consider.
I was actually planning on doing that.
Great.
I was, you know, driving down Paley Pike, looking at your sign. We just, in fact, we're sort of debugging it. It's
Oh, sure.
It feels like it's off more than it's on right now.
Yeah, I get it.
We'll get it squared away here quickly, but you know, I thought about approaching our board and talking to them about, you know, putting some I do most of the programming because, you know, I have most
You're the guy, right?
Well, we wouldn't expect all of our notices to go up there, but certainly some of them.
I'm struggling to, I want it to be interesting. I don't want it to be the same thing over and over.
Yeah, and that's part of it too, and I appreciate you being cognizant of that.
I would like, like, East Goshen, maybe a great, you know, sort of filler for a couple of days to get the message out, so I'll check and let you know.
Okay, great.
You know, that sign actually was 90% paid for by a FEMA grant.
Nice.
So it's under their recruiting and retention grants, so 75% of the message had to have some sort of volunteerism theme. But even though I posted messages, put volunteer now across the bottom, that solves that. Yeah, it was, it was a great, it was great to hear that we were awarded that grant.
That's great.
Grant, would you, if you know it and you're able to share, since we were discussing our two signs and consideration at one point, whether we're going to replace them or not, what the capital cost is going to be? Could you have a number of what that sign was for installation and inside itself?
28,000.
Okay, all right.
So we use the existing legs.
Well, yes, yeah.
You know, we're thinking about it. I've actually applied for another grant to try to do it at Park Avenue.
Perfect.
But that would be a full build. That'd be a few dollars more.
Yeah, yeah, okay, that gives a little perspective for us.
You pay more or less depending on the intensity of the sign or the size of the pixels.
Pixels, yeah. All right, thanks, Grant.
Thanks.
Thank you very much.
It's going to get fun.
All right.
And we'll see you, you guys, Saturday. We'll see you at the Community Day.
Yeah, Saturday's busy, but we'll be there.
All right.
Thank you so much.
Thanks.
And Brian, excuse me, Brian, Carmen Batavio is not here this evening to report on the rest of the emergency services. Derek, do you want to take that?
Sure, thank you, Madam Chair. So for the month of May, East Goshen, for, this is Good Fellowship Ambulance, by the way. For the month of May, East Goshen Township had 40, 54, 45 calls for the month of May for Good Fellowship. That was 7.7% of the percentage of calls overall for Good Fellowship, and year-to-date, we are at 266 calls for Good Fellowship.
Still no luck in the year-over-year, huh?
So I actually spoke to Chaz today, and we are going to see if we can get an Excel sheet similar to what Goshen Fire does. And I was just going to send him exactly what they do, and I figured that'd be good enough, and I'm hoping to start that in July.
Great.
So I just talked to him about that. I do not have Malvern's Fires report. Apparently, they're going through some administrative changes over there and trying to figure out who's going to be doing the reports. So hopefully, we'll be able to catch up on that next month.
Okay.
Thank you.
Fantastic. All right, moving right along, the financial report as of May 31st, 2022. Dave, do you want to take that?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I'm just looking up, it's like I've got to type that one.
Is that first paragraph, are those numbers correct, Dave? They're not?
No.
No, yeah, I figured you had caught that, but I didn't call you today, but I'm sure you'll comment on it. Clearly, the surplus year-to-date is more like
It's 2 million, 2,095,000. Yeah, so our year-to-date revenues are $6,141,173, expenses of $4,045,267, for a surplus of $2,095,905. And as of May 31st, the general fund balance was $7,730,818. Actual year-to-date revenue is not 4%, it's 9% higher than budget and 5% higher than prior year. Higher building permit revenue and EIT are driving the increases versus the budget. Year-to-date expenses are in line, 1% over budget and 2% lower than prior year-to-date. My conclusion is through the five months of 2022, East Goshen Township is managing expenses to budget, except for a few unforeseen costs. They're minor, however, some landscaping, tree removal, based on the timing of the monthly costs year-to-date versus full year. With continued detailed expense management, I believe that East Goshen Township can still meet our 2022 general fund budget expectations, even assuming continued inflation, which we're seeing now, and higher fuel costs. Our most recent was $4.77 per gallon for regular unleaded and $5.13 for diesel, which is way better than what you see in
That's right.
We're still feeling it, yeah.
Dave, can I ask you a question?
Yes.
On the $2,095,000, how much of that is due to just timing issues, and how much of that is a real, real savings in the bank?
I believe the majority of that is probably going to continue to be throughout the rest of the year. I'm just assuming that the costs are going to go up as well, and that's where the net budget comes from. EIT, I think, is, we're still going to be what the expectation of the budget was.
Okay. I'm just going to make a quick note here. We're having difficulty with our Zoom participants. So if you've noticed that I'm looking down at my phone, I just got a text from someone who's been trying to get into the Zoom room, and apparently, we're having trouble with our passcode. So I apologize for seeming to be a little distracted. It was just because we did have a resident actually, thank goodness, he was actually trying to get on and let me know. Are you going to be able to correct that, Derek, or is it too late?
I mean, I'm trying.
You're trying to correct it.
Something about, something about the passcode being wrong, but I'm looking on the invite, and it's correct, so I don't know what's going on.
So Derek is working on that, so I'm sorry. Didn't mean to interrupt you, Dave.
No, that's all I had. Any other questions, I'm happy to answer.
Yeah, Dave, the, under the other funds, unless it was something that I missed in the bills to pay, the journal entries that he gave us, the transportation fund had expenses of 148 plus. What was that? Revenue is $148,910 in expenses under the transportation fund.
For year-to-date?
Oh, maybe, these are year-to-date figures.
Correct.
So that would be that boot road. Okay, okay, that threw me off. I threw myself off. All right, thanks.
Does anybody have any questions for Dave? Are there any in-person participants who have any questions? Nope. We're going to move forward to the approval of the minutes, and well, there are no minutes to, no minutes to approve this evening. That will be next time, but we do have Treasurers report, so. There we go. Dave, I'll let you take that over.
Okay, from June 2nd to June 16th, 2022, general fund revenue over this period was driven by the earned income tax and real estate tax receipts, as well as real estate transfer tax receipts from residential home sales. Expenses for this period include our annual Goshen Fire contribution, annual Wego capital contribution, principal and interest on the Wego building bond, insurance payments, legal expenses, paving materials, pension contribution, as well as many routine operating expenses. The Capital Reserve Fund did get our $250,000 reimbursement for expenses via the Greenways Trails and Recreation Program grant awarded for the Hershey's Mill Dam Array.
Yep, that was great.
That was great to deposit.
Real money.
So are there any questions of the board members?
Batch three of four. Page two, I see where we have a couple bills from Buckley-Bryant, and that lets me ask the question, where are they on this, the unwinding? Again, that's three of four, page two.
I have the email today from, yesterday from Michael Gill, copied on it, asking their attorney the same question because they've had it in their court for about a week now that we had we had given them direction, and then they said, okay, they would take it to their client, and we had heard nothing back. And I think Michael Gill's exact quote was, with another week gone, where are we on this?
Okay, okay.
For the benefit of those here and listening, the references to the Hicks Farm Property, the eminent domain matter on Paley Pike Trail, so that's what the references were just now.
I believe Buckley-Bryant also does a little bit with the zoning board, right? Isn't there a REO?
Malvern Institute and stuff.
Okay.
Madam Chair, I move that we graciously accept the receipts and approve the expenditures as presented in the expenditure register in a summarizing the Treasurers report.
Okay. All right, and so are there any further questions? I had a question, Dave. It was batch three of four, page one. It's the vendor number 68, AMS Applied Microsystems?
Yes.
Can you tell me what?
AMS is our existing financial system that we're getting rid of.
That's right, that's right. Okay, that was the only question I had. According to that, are there any questions from anybody in the audience? And since there are no Zoom participants, because the link is apparently bad, Derek is fixing that. I'm going to go ahead and call a question, no, some people are paying the bills.
Hi.
No opposed, thank you. All right, so moving along. And Derek did have to step downstairs because he's got to fix that link. Under Old Business, we're going to consider draft language for converting the Sustainability Advisory Committee to an Environmental and Sustainability Advisory Council. And I believe we have someone present who might be willing to come on up, so by all means, Brian, do you want to come on up?
And as it comes up, I'm going to share my comment right off the bat with this draft ordinance bill. I'm not going to get into the, I talked to Derek today, and I said, I'm not going to get into the language here. It's up to staff and council to come up with the language to make the transition that we talked about as a board and charged to occur. My only question really is the language in the draft consistent with the Act, the Pennsylvania Act that created environmental sustainability or environmental advisory councils? And is there a state agency that will review this ordinance to ensure that it's consistent with the Act? And one of the questions I do have about the name of this ordinance and this council reforming, it's Environmental and Sustainability Advisory Council, whether that is copasthetic with the Act.
It is, actually.
It is, yeah, good, okay.
We we had the the Sustainability Advisory Committee had written to the state authority, and they came back and said, we don't what we don't care what you call them as long as it complies with the act.
Beautiful. And then so that's in your bail with then, Bill, to make sure it's consistent with the act.
Yeah, absolutely.
That's all I have on the whole thing. You guys can talk after this all you want.
Perfect. I I will have a couple of questions, and I'll need some input from the board on a couple of things. But briefly, Christie, I I'm not sure. Yes, she she did a great job of putting together language for the ESAC. She used the model ordinance that is provided by We Can Serve PA and intertwined the sustainability language into it, and she did a great job. So I use that as the framework for this ordinance. If I'm sorry, we'll get to you in just one second.
Actually, I'm going to defer to basically the conversations and discussions that have happened between Christie and David and other members of the board. I apologize. I was on vacation for two weeks in May, came back on June first, and I had a hard disk crash. So I've been without a computer until actually just a few days ago. I've been trying to keep updated with emails, but my compliments to Christie and the other members of the of the Sustainability Advisory Committee for forging ahead on this. I'm really just here in support of the SAC, really.
Perfect. All right, that's fine. Have a seat. There we go.
Thank you. All right. So a couple of things, just to to cover what this ordinance does. Your Sustainability Advisory Council was created by resolution. So that was an easy fix, that 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 resolution will be rescinded by the adoption of this.
Committee, as it was. It was a committee. It was a sustainability committee.
Committee. Sure.
That's for them.
Right. Thank you. So that will be rescinded once this ordinance is adopted. But there were a couple of things. The second packet or the second document in your packet had a couple of comments or questions from me for the board. One is numerical. I'll talk to Derek about that. You don't have to worry about that. And the other is on page two that talked about one of the powers that I wanted to discuss with you to determine whether you wanted the ESAC to have, and that is that they have to rebut review all subdivision and land development plans filed with the township. Under the municipality's planning code, developer of land is required to go to the planning commission and to this board and have their plans reviewed by them. Is this something you envision applicants to be required to go to a committee meeting, another committee meeting in addition to those that they're already required to go to? Or is this something that you were thinking?
I would like to have verbiage in there that says that they that they may be required by the Board of Supervisors or Planning Commission.
Yeah, maybe. I I would note that in in the Conservancy Board, Section thirteen three E says that they provide review and comment to Board Supervisors and Plan Commission on Natural Resources Impact on Subdivision and Land Development. And so, so we already, you know, yeah.
That's my next discussion piece in that the Conservancy Board and this new committee overlap almost verbatim in multiple, in multiple points.
We're aware of that. Can we just, can we, do you think that we could have verbiage in there that says may be required? That way, we have, it's not, it's not required, but it may be required by.
Well, we could do it. It may may at the discretion of either the manager. Bill, I don't know whether that works or not. I know.
I don't like giving discretion.
Yeah, I I got. Yeah, I I'm with you. East Bradford Township, we did have EAC review any any development plans that came in. They got a chance to comment on them. So that was at least one practice.
Did the applicant go to that meeting as well, or was that a?
I think it probably depended on any of the interface with the applicant and the staff, and whether or not they thought that they, you know, might give them advice, say, it might be good for you to have a presence there to present your plan, et cetera, depending on the magnitude of the plan. So there could have been some, you know, just informal discussion to say, it might be a good thing as opposed to just seeing the the plans to actually have a presence.
Okay, that is fair.
I I think it'd be good for the EAC. I was not that we're a mature township. It's not that we're gonna have that much development, but I know we have one coming up. It's gonna be in my backyard sometime soon. I'd certainly like EAC to look at it.
Right.
EA, ESAC.
ESAC.
ESAC. There we go. Okay, so then then I can certainly.
My comments.
I I can certainly tweak that language to say, may review subdivision and land development plans. The the other issue, like, was alluded to, i- is that the powers of the ESAC and the Conservancy Board are almost identical. If you if you could, I you have both of the ordinances in front of you. If you could put them side by side. If you look at section thirteen dash three, powers of the Conservancy Board and seventeen dash six in the ESAC ordinance, they are, a couple of these are almost verbatim. If you look at A in the Conservancy Board and look at C and B in the ESAC, they're they're similar. B in the Conservancy Board is almost exactly the same as E in the ESAC powers. And these are like, like we discussed, taken directly from the ordinance that is provided by the state.
Yeah, I I I'll be very candid in 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 this regard. The the original idea was to reduce the number of ABCs, and the idea of merging the Conservancy with the environmental and and sustainability was proposed, and I thought it was a good idea because of the redundancy and the overlap. But somewhere along the line, we lost our our will to do that because the Conservancy Board frankly didn't want to do it. And so I talked with the Sustainability Advisory Representative, who basically said, you know, we're good with working in cooperation with Conservancy. Let's take it one step at a time, and we'll we'll work on that. So that's kind of the current posture is that the the board is unwilling to combine the two committees. The two, at least the the ESAC has agreed to work in cooperation with the Conservancy Board. One task, but you're right. I mean, mapping environmentally sensitive areas is on both of them. I mean, it's it's really is redundant. And and so, but I I don't know that we can resolve that right now at this at this meeting unless.
That's the, I I think that the board has run into impasse with some of the volunteers, and I think that that's where the problem lies, is that each board has, each of our ABCs has their own own unique makeup of individuals, and there was a reluctance to have the two boards come together, the Conservancy and the EA, EA, ESAC. And so Conservancy does certain things really well, and the concentration is not really there with the ESAC as far as plantings and shrubbery and and whatnot. There's an interest, and there's, I think, a desire on the behalf on on the ESAC Committee Council. That's gonna take a little getting used to, too. But I think that they would be interested in 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 taking on some of that, but I don't think that, I think there's too much for one committee to do. And so I think it's at this point, we need to kind of feel our way.
Issue is that is that we're they're gonna, they're gonna be recruiting new volunteers based on this. And we'll be interviewing one of those candidates at the next meeting, who is, in fact, you know, very much targeted at this new, you know, task and so on. So but but as I said, the ESAC is fine with, you know, working hand in glove with Conservancy going forward, and and we'll have an opportunity to maybe revisit that sometime in the future.
Right.
I I can't speak for Conservancy. I haven't talked to anybody in Conservancy.
We're just feeling our way around right now.
Bill, in in the redundancy that you have pointed out, is there any, are there any implications to that relative to procedural stepping on toes, anything of that from your perspective?
The way it's written, if they're going to be working through that together, not necessarily. The only one that I would have a concern about would be the review of subdivision land development applications, because then it's two additional meetings in addition to the Planning Commission and the Board that that you'd be requiring an applicant to to go through and have their plan reviewed by, and that's an onerous process. If it's a simple sub, a a simple lot line change between two neighbors, they're gonna have to go to four public meetings.
And and the the direction here is really the environmental impact of a saldo, basically, right? Not a, not a border, you know, dispute or anything. It's really the overall environmental impact of a
Well, one of.
Saldo application.
So one of the reasons I'd like to make the verbiage, say, it may be required at some at some point, perhaps Conservancy will be more willing to merge in with the ESAC. And at that point, we would need to make the verbiage that it would be required because it's required now, and land development does go through Conservancy. I I I know that I, when I was liaison, I saw plans, and there was discussion about what trees and shrubbery would be acceptable for certain situations. So I don't remember if the, I don't remember if the developer, the landowner was there for that particular meeting, but I do know that the plans were there and there were discussions.
That's the interesting rub, because the Conservancy Board, I always thought they had a niche with the landscape plan associated with a subdivision, as opposed to the Environmental Sustainability Advisory Council. Now we'll be looking at the overall environmental impact. They'll be looking at things like stormwater and and a variety of other things. It's it's a it's a larger view, whereas I've always looked at Conservancy as they're looking at the plantings, the landscaping relationship more than more than some of the other components of a subdivision land development.
Well, the Conservancy Board, as it states right now, is supposed to keep an index and recommend regulations to the township for wetlands, woodlands, geographic, other geographical features and open space. So they're not necessarily just tied to landscape as it's as it's written right now.
I think with with the change that you can, as Michelle suggested, a maybe requested the review at the discretion of the board would solve this this issue. I think that I I would I would accept that as a a change to the proposed ordinance. Though my my question was, I thought the state, the act required that the chair be appointed by the Board Supervisors, and I didn't see that in here.
I think I think.
It is in here. Seventeen dash seven, the Chair of the Council shall be appointed annually by the Board of Supervisors.
Where's, I'm sorry, what?
Seventeen dash seven A.
Seven, okay.
Actually, Bill, I have a logistical question to follow up on that. When, how do we? So when this gets passed, or assuming the board passes it, how do we, do we have anything special we have to do to transfer the members over to this? Do we have to do a resolution in conjunction with this?
You don't.
Add the actual names of the people.
You you should do it. You don't have to do a resolution. You can do it by motion, but it's easier if you do a resolution because it's documented then. And the way this is structured is that it's it has to be staggered terms. So if you do it as a resolution, then you have the names and those terms as well.
So it could just be the same night we would pass this. We could do a resolution, doing the terms.
Correct. Or you could just move move to appoint them as well, but it's cleaner if you have a resolution as well.
Okay.
And and upon passage of this ordinance, there will be no Sustainability Advisory Council.
Gotcha. I didn't. I guess I didn't mean transfer. I just meant, you know.
A point. Okay, sure.
By the way, I I I will say that I I share David Shuey's sense on down the road, ultimately, the Conservancy Board melding into and becoming the part of the ESAC and condensing it into essentially one body is assimilates through attrition or some whatever, whatever else. So I'm I'm of that mind while I sit here.
However you do that, you will have to keep in mind that the ESAC will be limited to seven members that will have three-year terms.
Of course.
That are staggered. So.
Yeah.
So moving people from Conservancy to ESAC may take some time if you don't do it at the at the introduction.
Yeah, should we make?
Can I ask a quick question?
Two.
When you're done.
Yeah, I was just gonna say, should we make a motion to make the the change to the that that section separate from advertising, or can we just?
You can do it all in one. Authorize me to make that change and advertise it with that change is all is fine.
Great.
Thanks, Derek. What's our vacancies on the SAC and also the Conservancy right now?
We have one opening on the SAC with two applications for the for the opening.
Okay. I I think I actually Conservancy, we have two.
Okay, because I'm sort of of the mindset as well, just wanting to merge them both.
The point, the point is well-taken. Maybe we should fill the SAC or ESAC vacancies with people from Conservancy before we go outside.
If they, you know, that.
I think you work with your existing pool of appointees before you consider any new new applicant.
I think the ESAC folks would welcome somebody, you know, if if they're interested in in coming over to the and and vice versa. So I mean, that 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 has happened before, where people are on one committee and go and apply and and go to another committee.
But before we bring new people in, we ought to take care of the people.
Well, we also have to get a sense from Conservancy if they're willing to work with ESAC folks and.
Well, no, we don't.
It's true.
No, we don't. We don't.
It's a board decision.
It's a board decision.
Nice to have an interface, but ultimately, we have to make a decision. Presently, I think there are three members on the Conservancy Board, right? There are just three sitting there right now with the vacancies.
Four.
Two vacancies. Really, the third one is one member.
So it's a five, currently, Eric, it's a five-member board, though, currently. I mean, that the to fully filled, it's a five-member board. And right now, we have two vacancies and one who's gonna drop off, so there'll be two left on the Conservancy Board, right?
It's a seven-member board.
Oh, there's seven. I lost track of the number.
Does it make sense, though, to establish this first and then talk about?
I don't. Yeah, I I think.
Do that again.
Well, well, actually, no.
No.
To establish the ESAC first and then decide? Because once the ESAC is established, you won't have a SAC anymore, and you'll need to appoint members to this right away.
No, I meant for people that maybe want to transition over to one. I mean, if there's a vacancy at some, because there's gonna be vacancies right away, because we don't have a full board.
Maybe we just, as David kind of alluded, we we see how this settles in. Once we establish the the ESAC and then see what the what the sense is, maybe you can poll folks, Derek, and find out those who are sitting on this SAC, the committee, who would be interested to serve, and maybe any members of the Conservancy Board who might be interested to transition to the EAC and see see what that number looks like and then go from there.
That sounds good. But don't you think we should do that before we interview any new people?
Oh, I I I. Well, all right.
Interestingly, I think we have two applications for one opening, and maybe one of those would be interesting, going over to Conservancy, because we've got, you know, more than we need for our one open position. So and that's an option as well.
Well, how many, how many members?
That's kind of counter to your comment, though, because what if if we find that there are a number of Conservancy members that would like to serve on the ESAC, and I don't want to, we, I don't want to build back up the Conservancy Board if we can, if they're interested to making a transition and and then just dissolving the.
Yeah.
You know what I'm saying?
Short term and long term, and I think short term, you know, we 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 have some really good candidates that I.
I was gonna say.
To the right, here I am.
Do you have a relative out there, David?
Yeah, my point is that I think we establish the ESAC, we've we fill it, and then we see how the two groups work together, and then we we resolve it in the future, and that that's where.
I agree with that.
I I can live with that as well.
Okay. David, are you ready to make a?
I would, Madam Chair, I'd like to move that we authorize the Township Manager and Township Solicitor to advertise the creation of a new chapter in the Township Code titled Environmental and Sustainable Advisory Council, which creates and provides operating procedures and powers for a new Environmental and Sustainability Advisory Council, as well as repeals any ordinance or. As well as repeals any ordinance or resolution establishing these Goshen sustainability advisory council. So we're. We're.
With it, with the changes.
Yeah, uh, with the, uh, suggested amendment to. Um, section seventeen six, item J. To indicate that, uh, subdivision and land development plans would be reviewed at the discretion of the board and requested of the board.
I'll second that.
Easy for you to say.
Do you want this at your next meeting or the?
This isn't thirty days?
No.
It only takes one advertising. Uh, there's any great rush, whatever works for you guys.
I'll talk to you, but I think.
What do you, what do you think? What do you think you wanna do that? July nineteenth, okay. All right. Are there any other questions, uh, from the board regarding the establishment of the new EAC? ESAC, ESAC. How about in the audience? Does anybody present? How many questions regarding this environmental committee? Or anybody in our Zoom room?
Are they back?
They're back.
Oh, good.
We had a link that was not, it was not, it was not accurately. Yeah, Eric, Eric took care, took care of that. I'm gonna call the question, uh, those in favor of creating the new ESAC. Thank you all. Okay. All right. Um, as is my. Ability to change the order of things at my discretion. It's okay. Um, I'd like to under new business. Um, look at, um, ten B, C, and D. Before we go on to the long range budget planning, if that's okay with you. Okay, so let's go ahead and look at B, consider resolution revision from pension audit.
Thank you, Madam Chair. So this is. This is really a technical thing. Um, if, if you can see it, it's basically. Uh, it, it came out in, uh, discovered by the auditor general's office during our, uh, process here in the beginning of the year. Uh, discovered a minor issue in our resolution passed. Uh, a few years ago, uh, specifically twenty eighteen dash sixty-one and twenty nineteen dash sixty-one. Uh, both of those reference another resolution that is supposed to say twenty fourteen dash sixty. But unfortunately it was written as fourteen dash sixty-one. So. They are requiring that we change this to reflect the accuracy of the. The accurate numerical value of the resolution.
It's administrative amendment for resolutions period.
Okay.
I move we authorize signing revision, uh, revised resolution two thousand eighteen dash sixty-one. And two thousand nineteen sixty-one to properly reference resolution twenty fourteen dash sixty.
Second, thanks, Mike. Okay. Does anybody have any questions here on the board or in our? Okay, seeing none, I'm gonna call the question, those in favor of authorizing the revision. I.
Nice to have the ducks in a row for posterity.
Speaking of catch, um, C is considering a catchall provision for East Goshen zoning ordinance.
Thank you again. I will start with this one and then Bill can jump in. Uh, Bill and I have been talking about this for several weeks. Um, probably longer actually, but we, we see a little bit of a weakness, we think, in our zoning ordinance. Um, there are certain municipalities out there that actually have what you would call catchall provision. In other words. If something is not allowed, uh, you know, if something is not named in, in this zoning ordinance, then. This is where we go. This is the district that we would put it. So again, that catchall, so we're not vulnerable to lawsuits, not allowing a legal use. In the Commonwealth of Pennsylvania into East Ocean. So this would simply establish the district of where to go. Um, and that's all for you to decide. I mean, we can, we can obviously guide you and discuss it. Um, if we wanna talk about it tonight as far as making a decision, if we wanna think about it, that's fine, but we wanted to bring this to your attention as. What we think is a good idea to, uh, protect us in the future with uses always changing, new uses coming about. So. Um, it is up for a board discussion at this time.
Where would the district? Be?
Well, that's, that's the, that's the good question and I'm gonna try to pull up on the screen here.
Oh, man. A catchall zoning district, uh, that we don't, we're gonna put everything in and we, we're, and.
Not necessarily a new district, Mike. So, so what this would be, this would just be a text amendment. To your current zoning ordinance to choose one of your current zoning districts to allow everything else. So as, as Derek mentioned, you are required to zone for every lawful use within your municipality somewhere.
Which is always changing year to year with case law.
Always changing. The most recent were medical marijuana facilities. A lot of municipalities didn't have them. There were challenges. Uh, so in order to prevent you from having to change your ordinance every time the legislature does something. Uh, and creates a new business or the, the industries create a new, um, type of business. Uh, it's always a good idea to have somewhere in your township that you allow as a use. Uh, generally by conditional use, something along the lines that says. All other lawful uses not provided for within the zoning ordinance shall be permitted here by conditional use.
Okay. And, and of course, the, it's, this is not an absolute failsafe because just like the, the. Prior generational, um, situation that would occur. Well, yeah, you allowed for mobile homes, but. Uh, it's right in the flood plain. I mean, you know, what can we do there? And so we could say, yeah, everything else goes in the industrial district. And somebody will say, are you really serious? You wanna put this kind of a care facility or whatever it would be? So it's not, it's not an absolute guarantee that we wouldn't have a, a cure, a challenge, curative, et cetera, et cetera.
It gives me something to argue at least.
Is C four one of your suggestions?
It's explosive district.
I don't know if we, I mean, I, so I don't know if you, how much thought you give in this. I, I don't know if I have an absolute suggestion. I, I, obviously the industrial. Where the Cs are, are the ones where you, you kind of hone in on.
I think Mark Gordon had mentioned the I, is it?
I one.
I one district.
Quite industrial.
Yeah.
Right.
What do you, what do you think, Mike? Come up. Do you have any ideas?
I.
Would we put in there one establishing this? Are there specific uses or is this just any, it's just?
The line for the use would be any other lawful use not otherwise permitted in.
Okay. Well, I know the I one would be the, would the location I'd be looking at with that, this kind of a.
Because we do have a few right now. I'm not gonna say, cause I don't wanna give anybody ideas. I mean, there is some ones that we would be leaving ourselves open to.
I, I will tell you, he- here's the type of stuff that, that has caused issues.
Okay.
Mobile home parks. Billboards.
Yep.
Uh, adult entertainment.
Okay.
Um, what else have I dealt with? Medical marijuana.
Until that was finally.
Right.
That's kind of why I was going with C four, which is a planned highway commercial. It's route three.
I, I don't think. I, I don't think we need to do this tonight. Well, the point is that we've got, uh, the budget to start on and, and I think we need to roll into that soon.
Well, I think what you've done, uh, Bill is, and Derek is, is captured our attention by way of this as a consideration. You guys will keep it. Keep it alive, I suppose, but, uh, our sense is, okay, this, from a legal standpoint, seems to make sense. And, uh.
So would you like more of a recommendation in a future meeting at some point?
So you may examine the districts and say this, this, these other uses might work there. And be safe there from a challenge type of thing. So you guys may think about that and come back to us.
Bill, you said the recommendation was I one. And, and I think I agreed with that.
Yeah.
I mean, it was sort of insulated, uh, right along your border. Um, so put some of the uses that may not be desirable elsewhere.
So is that airport road?
It is.
And keep in mind, and any kind of zoning, they would still have to come to an agreement with private owners.
Is this a standard?
Almost every municipality that I live in has one.
Okay. All right. So we can discuss this, uh, if you, you'll give us. So let's go ahead and move, move along. The mosquito issue down in Milltown, uh, reservoir area. Stop that. Um, so I, I actually, I, um, had reached out to Derek and asked him if we could. Um, make a preemptive effort here of, um, mitigating mosquitoes. Down in the Milltown Dam area, um, before it gets severe. So, Dirk.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Uh, yeah, I mean, some of the things I'm doing right now, uh. You know, reaching out to the university and I had an initial conversation with them. Looking at other aspects as far as the construction and what we could do during construction when that starts down there to. Mitigate it are all sort of long-term planning. Uh, so it doesn't really do anything to alleviate the here and now. So. This was just an idea of looking at seeing if somebody could come in and, and do something quickly. I'm open to suggestions, obviously from the board. Um, and see what their take is on it, but, um, the only way I see. Being able to do something very quickly is to bring somebody in or perhaps utilize our public works in some way. Um, but I'm not an expert in this field, so, um, I would like a little bit of feedback and a direction on this one.
Well, the, first of all, public works that they, I, I think there's at least one or two members that do have a, a Pennsylvania pesticide application license.
Correct.
Um, but there are always the issues of pesticides. And is there an organic way? Can we use salad oil and spray that on as opposed to, um. Next generation's DDT, whatever, any of those things. So, um, is, is there an organic? Um, um, more natural solution?
I did. I didn't read it.
So.
Yeah, there is. Um, and one I've used in the past, uh, it's called Bacillus tergensis. Israeliensis. It's a bacteria that kills. Um, gnats, black flies and mosquitoes only. I've used it many times. It's totally natural. Um, and it, um, it works. And I think we ought to try that before we try anything else.
Chris, did you get that spelling correct?
John, do you know how it's applied?
Uh, it's applied in many different ways, but the easiest way is what they call dunkers. Uh, and they call them that because they're little gray circles that look like, uh, small donuts. Um, now, the easiest way is to throw it on the water. Um, but that doesn't work here because some of the water moves. So what we have to do is take these donuts. And tie them on to a, uh, I use hemp because it's biodegradable. Tie them on, um, every three or four feet. And then tie a rock or something on to the end of it and just throw it out into brackish pool.
So like it's submerged then?
Some will submerge and some will float on the top. They, they should, they should do both. Um, but, uh. Because, um, mosquitoes don't breed in moving water, you have to find the brackish pools. On the side and, and put it in there. But this will work and it's not expensive. It's something we could do. In fact, I would be willing to go out with, uh, the conservancy, conservancy people or environmental people and, and do this.
Well, somebody's gonna have to go out there with them and. Educate them how to pronounce it. Do you have any, um, uh, you know, you have expertise in this as well, both being on the conservancy board in your own business? Is that something you're, you're familiar with? Do you have any other thoughts? Oh, I just want to make sure, because you're here in conservancy board and then your own business. Okay.
Thing is, it's not a pesticide.
Yeah, that's, that, you know, as a layperson, that sounds good to me.
Yeah.
So would you like me to start talking up? I know you said conservancy, but should I talk to public works starting tomorrow? I, yeah, if we can just streamline it, you know.
Yeah.
I think that.
That's great suggestion.
Where, where do we buy it?
Almost any, uh, major, uh, lawn and garden outfit or gardening. I, I got it from the gardening supply people.
Okay.
Okay, normally we don't take questions if we're not making a decision, but if anybody in the audience here has any. Points, you can come one up to the, uh, microphone, please state your name and, um, give us a little input. Thanks.
Excellent.
Hi.
Please.
I'm Brittany Shookstah. I'm a resident of East Goshen. Just a quick question. I think that was a great idea that John had about the, um.
Go ahead, say it. Go ahead, say it.
Um, but if John hadn't been here and hadn't given that suggestion, would this, uh, topic have gone to the ESAC furthest input before a decision?
Conservancy or ESAC or both? Yeah.
Okay.
All right, good.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Smart girl.
Um, are there any questions on Zoom regarding the, um. Mosquito issue? All right. Seeing none, I think we're gonna go ahead and move forward. All right. So we have some direction. You're gonna talk to public works and, uh, see if we can't track that down.
Good.
Okay, under new business. We're gonna go back to A, long range planning. Unless you wanna get the other standing issues out real fast. Are they gonna be quick? Hershey's Mill Dam.
The pride, I, you know, I was over, over there today and yesterday and, uh.
Let's do that.
It's, it's really, um, uh, the work that public works accomplished today was amazing. The amount of, um, amendment they did to the stream with, you know, these big boulders. They created the plunge pools today. Uh, so that the muddy water that's coming out of that, that stream amendment. Uh, the amendments to the stream is, uh, should be starting to dissipate because I've been talking with them over at the villages of Hershey's Mill and explaining to them what's going on. Um, because they've noticed it. Um, but the, the project, uh, and I was over there to walk around. It, it's, it's getting there. It's gonna be really neat, I think. So the, what, what the public works accomplished today, uh, as they are often able to do, the amount of work they accomplished today was pretty. Pretty, uh, commendable.
Yesterday and I saw all the trucks out.
So the, the work, the work Mike's talking about is the amendment to our, uh, initial permit because of IDA. So we're working on. Essentially what we're doing now is shoring up downstream near the actual house so that erosion doesn't continue to. Um, go on there, which is, it was pretty bad before IDA and then after IDA was even worse. So. Uh, our public, it, it's sort of a working in tandem right now with our public works downstream and then. Upstream a little bit right there near the parking lot. They actually started the boardwalk. So that's exciting. So the boardwalk is, is getting done as we speak and, uh, yeah, it's a lot of progress right now.
Yeah, Mark's double checking everything to make sure that it's done correctly.
Absolutely.
On the Milltown Dam project.
I do have a slight update and, and I know. I'm gonna, uh, so it, it, it went from one person's desk to another, uh, our, our permit. And I, I know that doesn't sound like much of an update, but it is in the final stages of when. A supervisor at DEP, uh, dam safety, from what I was told, gets a bunch of permits at once. They approve them all at once in batches. They don't really do it individually. So it's on the supervisor's desk. I'm, I'm told it's imminent and two, three weeks out. So I know we all heard this before, but, uh, I guess we'll reevaluate it July fifth. If that hasn't come to fruition, but right now I'm hopeful that at that time I can sit here and say we, we got the permit, but we'll see.
And I called, uh, Carolyn Comit as the chief of staff and, and they're reaching out to the DEP. She sits as the minority chair of the environmental. So, uh, so that will help and, and I like the record to show that there was a simultaneous. Eye roll from all the supervisors on the permit is eminent.
I will duly note that.
I, I was, I was out with Mark Miller, a week and a half ago to the Milltown Dam and, uh, the dam's still there, but they've done a lot of work. Upstream of the dam. Uh, they've already planted a lot of trees and bushes and stuff like that. So. Uh, once, once we take that dam out, that damn dam out, um, it ought to be, uh, ought to be pretty ready to go.
And I will say though, the construction process down there, when it does start is gonna be pretty brutal compared to Hershey's Mill. So we should prepare for that.
Yeah.
Okay.
I agree.
All right, then, uh, we're gonna pop, pop back up to, uh, under new business ten A. This is the long range budget planning discussion. So I'm thinking that Dave is gonna wanna start the ball rolling on this.
Yes, thank you, Madam Chair. So last year I was about a month in before I had to start doing my. My first long range plan, uh, I had a little. my first long-range plan. Uh, I had a little bit more time. Very busy to start this one and there were some requests made and lessons learned in the last one. So I tried to incorporate those into this year's long-range plan. Um, just as an overview, I'd like to say that the long-range plan is just an estimate at a point in time. This is not meant to be a doom and gloom scenario. Uh, the purpose is to identify possible revenue weaknesses and cost-cutting measures that could be needed, uh, as well as to, to foster discussion on current projects, possible future projects, gather supervisor feedback, concerns, as well as any additional direction for things that staff could investigate. Uh, so we wanna look at what do we have more or less control over? So some of those items will be, we have more control over wages, certain projects, equipment, um, real estate property tax, utility rates. Um, we recently just sent um, just to notify the public who's watching, we, we actually have started sending to Portnoy, uh, our AR now, uh, litigation, those who are past due two quarters consecutive on their um, utilities. We need to identify wants versus needs. Um, the less would be all the other revenues. We have very little control over um, insurance costs, advertising, water, cost of necessary goods and services, and to a lesser extent, electricity. Consider this an opportunity to review what we currently observe as our expense drivers and our revenue risks. Um, if we're forecasting a negative net operating result, what opportunities do we have for cost-cutting? Taking on additional debt, possible federal, state money available or rate adjustments. What can we change? What can we not? Or are we being overly aggressive or overly conservative? Um, I tried to cut a fine line on this one. And um, are there ongoing projects that are driving it or are they regular expenses? So with that, I will uh, jump into it. We are currently forecasting that by 2027, we will be below our 20% uh, of revenues necessary, but you can, Eric, wanna go to the next one?
Let me just jump in as, as Dave referenced, the 20% uh, threshold as he starts to talk about some of the scenarios and projections. Uh, the township has a fund balance policy. Um, and as most municipalities do, that when their general fund balance, which is essentially our savings account, when uh, and presently, uh, you heard earlier today, it's got seven million uh, plus dollars in the current general fund balance. When that hits a particular threshold, in our case, 20% uh, of revenues uh, for the, uh, the given year, uh, when it, when it drops to that level, the, it, it triggers the governing body to have to take action to return uh, the sustainability essentially of the township finances and it, uh, uh, obviously with a either a, a expense cutting or revenue enhancement. So that 20% that he references is a specific uh, resolution, uh, fund balance policy that the township has. Sorry, Dave.
No, that's great. Thank you, Mike. Um, so you can see as, as early as next year, um, we're looking at jumping into the, I've taken this kind of as a 2023 jumping off point for discussion of the budget. Um, it's very similar to where we started last year. Um, this is about 600,000 in the whole expenses over revenues. So we've already got some work to do. And that just grows slowly as basically flat revenues or EIT going up is offset by other revenues staying flat and expenses driven by inflation and um, supply costs are gonna outpace revenues over the long term. Um, as I was mentioning before, there's a number of different scenarios to try and offset this. Um, this is a high-level look, so I've done it all by detailed line items, but I'm providing a summary so we don't get bogged down in the weeds.
Right.
Um, and you can see based on the average increase or decrease column far to the right on the 10-year projection, that's the average increase from 23 to uh, 2032. So a 10-year span of what the average increases are. We're basically assuming that revenues in total grow very slightly. And that the expenses with inflation are gonna outpace it. Um, especially with our public safety, um, wages would stay. I'm basically forecasting flat with what the increase in inflation is. But we've got CBAs for Wego, we've got CBAs for the fire. Those coupled with some of the costs that we know are kind of out of our control, um, just supply chain issues. We can look at this and say, how do we wanna approach it? This is not including the long-term projects, um, which we currently have ongoing. You wanna jump to a show some of this?
I'm just gonna make a quick note to anybody who has a question. Um, we're gonna let Dave and Derek make this presentation and then uh, we'll go to questions after that. So make sure you've jotted down your question. I'm sorry, we're not asking you to chime in right away, but this is uh, this is how we're gonna do, we're gonna have this um, presented.
Can also use the chat option if it's a logistical issue with your screen or anything. Thank you.
Yeah, no, I'll keep the overview pretty brief and then we can have some discussion about different questions and, and get the audience involved. So this is just a graphically representing the um, the orange line is the expenses. You can see the separation and how it takes off um, versus our revenue expectations. Let me go to the next. Here is representation of our expenses. Um, it's in total is the entire total bar. And those segments of different colors are represented down in the legend below. Those are gonna show that um, public safety, the light blue at the bottom is the largest percentage grows incrementally slightly larger. So say from 42 to 45% over the next 10 years. But, but most of the other ones are staying pretty flat. So, so that's just pushing it up. Those expenses are not necessarily in our control. So um, you wanna look at the next one? Percentage of total expenses, this is 2032. Uh, you can see public safety is 45%. Public Works is the next largest section and 17%. Um, important to note in all these other percentages, uh, insurance premiums uh, are anticipated at a 6% annual growth. Um, I did talk to multiple insurance companies, but they're not really giving long-term projections, of course, but um, looking at the history plus the short-term outlook, that's it's not overly conservative and it's definitely not um, definitely not uh, unrealistic.
Dave, on that one, at some point, could we get a breakdown of the uh, navy blue?
The baby blue?
Oh, between uh, police, fire, ambulance, that's sort of breakout, John.
Not now, just, just uh, in the future sometime.
Yep.
Thank you.
When you refer to insurance, you're talking primarily to health insurance or property casualty as well?
Everything rolled in. And workers' comp. Yep. We've actually been um, investigating um, switching insurance, whether that would impact us. I have some outstanding questions for um, for Divid to see if uh, their property liability, we checked on that. We couldn't be where we currently are and uh, we actually are currently, I just got today, um, estimates that we're looking at versus our workman's comp. And it's kind of apples to oranges because when you use multi uh, policy discounts, I have to see if we're currently getting it. So I'm reaching out to our, our current broker um, versus dividend level we're at. We've been with MRM for 20 or for 10 years, 11 years. Uh, we kinda would start over, but without those dividends, the pricing is better with Divid. So um, that's gonna be a good discussion and we're gonna be coming to you with some recommendations and see what your thoughts are on that. Uh, it could be a better long-term solution, but we'll dig into it some more. You wanna jump to the next one? The other way.
The other way?
Okay.
Yep. So I wanted to give an overview of uh, monies that we've spent on total projects uh, currently. So here are the basic, the, the biggest projects that we've had ongoing. Uh, these are these are going back to 2017 when the bond was issued. We have the West Ocean sanitary sewer improvements. We've already spent three and a half million dollars there. Uh, we've just started on Hershey Mill Estate Sewer. Uh, Paley Pike Trail, almost five and a half billion dollars. Uh, the Milltown Dam and Park, we're already 500,000 in and we, as we can hear, have a lot more to do. Basically hasn't started. Hershey's Mill Dam, we're at 1.2 million.
Hey, I, Dave, I think it's worth pointing out though, the West Ocean and, and sanitary sewer improvements, that's a separate fund where, whereas what we're talking about in the projections here is our general fund, correct?
Correct. Thanks for pointing that out. You wanna jump to the next one and I'll show um, so ester, estimated remaining costs, um, based on our latest estimates. Here's the monies that we think we have outstanding. In the next slide, we'll break down by which fund we have. Uh, we think that money may come from. So another $4 million for Milltown. Another 2 million in um, the West Ocean Sanitary Sewer. That's primarily the West Townway Pump Station. Uh, Hershey Mill Estate Sewer, another million and a half. Paley Pike Trail, uh, that's the expensive option. For alternate Route B, um, 4.2 million. I put a placeholder in for the Milltown Park for John. And Hershey's, yep, Hershey's Mill Dam, um, only about another 5.96 and we should get more grant money back on that when that's completed.
I, I, I do wanna note if, if the number for Milltown Dam is eye-popping, it is for us too. Uh, because the estimate was always under, since I've been here, was always under, under 3 million and closer to 2.6, 2.7. Now, we, knowing that was five years old, Dave and I got together with Gana Fleming and said, we might wanna update this um, number. And, and we had to for some grant purposes anyway. And it came, it came in basically double, double. So, yeah.
And, and that's when we had the conversation some months ago to say, when this thing comes to show real numbers that we're gonna have to, and when, when the time comes that we presumably go out to bid, we've got a whole list of options so that we can pick and choose and say, we're not going to approve this place. So we've, there, we've a long ways to go. I'm not surprised that number.
Question for the two of you. Um, how much, if anything, do you think we can get in state grants?
Yeah.
We currently have 915,000, I think, in state and federal grants for Milltown. And uh, we haven't received any back yet because it's all been engineering so far. But uh, I did put in an application in May for ARPA money from Chester County. And I applied for 1.5 million dollars.
Which will cover a big chunk of that gap.
It's almost everything outstanding that we don't have in bond money and grant money.
Yeah.
Would really like to get that.
But to answer your question further, the, all the money we're getting from the state is done. I mean, we, we've gotten it. So we, we haven't actually received.
It's been awarded.
It's been awarded. Yeah. I think it's, what is it? Half a, half a million or is it more?
No, it's not under 15,000, I think. Yeah, it was, it was uh, close to half a million for Hershey's Mill.
So in other words, we can't go back.
We can't go back, yeah.
Brand. Yeah. That's the grant they gave us.
Just, just open the bear here, but um, we're being forced to do this by the um, Army Corps of Engineers, right?
Do they have any grants?
Uh, do, does the federal government help out when that's the case?
Nope.
Not at all?
Not that I'm aware of.
No, I mean, I had discussions with Mark Miller about history of the Hershey's Mill Dam. And apparently at one time, uh, I believe it was the state came and said that they would, they were willing to eat the costs and knock down that dam and residents determined they didn't wanna do that at the time. So.
That offer went away.
Yeah, so we are where we are.
Okay, uh, let me, this, that pie is what it is, I, I, I think. Uh, and, and we will have a chance to determine what of that pie we're actually gonna eat later on. I, I, the Milltown Dam is a good example.
Yeah, and some of the, some of the things you bring up there too, Mike, is um, all these different grants, the only problem is too, you've got restrictions. So once you get that grant money, you have to make sure that you do what you applied for. So if we've said we're gonna plant X amount of trees and we were gonna put them here and we're gonna have a boardwalk, a fishing pool, we have to have it to get that grant.
To get, yeah, so that's, that's gonna be a delicate balance too.
Jason clued me into that.
Yeah, okay.
Okay.
Still worth getting the money. So the source of funds, um, as Mike had alluded to, is um, the remaining project costs. We have another 2.7 million dollars in bond money we can use. We have 1.8 million dollars in ARPA money to use. We have 1.545 of awarded grant money we can use. And the other 5.9 million will have to get from a combination of general fund, capital fund and infrastructure sustainability fund.
Um, Dave, I have a couple of questions. So the 2017 bond money is technically to finish the trail, correct? Or was that trail and?
No, there's, the primarily that in Milltown. Yep.
All right, so primarily the trail and Milltown Dam.
But, but the trail has already used all the allotted money for it.
Right, so the rest of it really should be going to Milltown Dam.
Yeah.
Okay, the ARPA money, the 1.8 here that we have that we're looking at, I thought that was already allocated to Hershey's Mill Estates to the sewer issue.
Both to that and to the West Townway Pump Station.
These are all the projects combined.
I'm just making sure. So.
What is the other project? Hershey's Estates and.
And the West Town, uh, West Town Pump Station.
That's part of the total capital plan from West Ocean Sewer.
So this is already money that's already really been spent or is being spent.
It's been earmarked, yep.
And those are two we have to do.
And then the grants, the 1.5, what's that? What is that supposed to have been allocated toward? Is that just miscellaneous?
That's a combination of Milltown and what we have left in Hershey's Mill.
Okay, and um.
We hadn't, we hadn't gotten that 250,000 dollars at the start.
Okay.
That I did this. We literally just deposited that.
Okay. Um, the sewer reserve. Do you wanna talk about the sewer situation?
Um, I would say let's, let's put that a little bit on the side and focus on the general fund. So that's, that's what the main focus is.
But just, just for our information, I thought the sewer reserve is a couple million dollars.
2.5, I think, is in the sewer uh, capital reserve right now, 2.54 or something.
Okay, so why am I looking at 723?
Because that's, that's how much it's allocated for these projects, not necessarily what the balance is.
Yeah, that's how much would come out of our balance.
Okay. Thank you. That's uh, that clears up a little of the confusion I had too.
So that plus the ARPA money equals the two, the two projects basically right now.
Question for you. Yes, one, thanks for putting all this all together and I apologize for all, I'm the new on the board, so I've already asked 100 questions to you. The 2017 bond money, let's say the county blesses us with that money. What else is that? Is that earmarked for anything else specific?
The ARPA money from Chester County?
No, the, that's the, the 27, yeah, let's say we get the ARPA money from Chester County. We put that towards the Milltown Dam. What else is that 2017 bond money earmarked specifically for? Anything or is that just? What could that be used for then?
Uh, even if we spend all that bond money?
I'm saying, let's say we get that, like, cause that, you said that's for, they'll be used for.
But that's actually just to close the gap now, is the bond.
It is, you would use that for Milltown and the rest of Hershey's Mill. And uh, you would also have to spend that 1.5 million to, to not spend it in your general fund.
Got it.
Yeah, it's not covering as much as you think, I guess.
Thank you.
An amount, right? I mean, we can use it for projects that were identified.
Well, we could, but the original bond was taken out with a specific series of tranches within it to say this for this project, this project, this project, and it was, it was I don't know legally bound to, to do that.
I didn't see anything in any of the documents. It was the basis for taking out the bonds is where they got those numbers. But obviously we've over, we went over, I think we're about 40 something thousand over on the bond that was allocated for the Paley Pike Trail, but we're investigating alternative gr- routes. So we're using that money rather than capital money to go and and engineer it, yeah. But we're investigating alternative routes, so we're using that money rather than capital money to go and engineer it, yeah.
Is there, I know there's a twenty percent requirement for, what do they call it, holdback or on the general fund?
The, the, the fund balance policy is that twenty percent threshold, when it hits that point, that the board has to take assertive action.
Twenty percent of revenues.
Is there a requirement like that on the sewer fund?
I don't believe we have a sewer fund.
Not, not the resolution, resolutions I've reviewed.
I don't think, I don't, pretty sure we do not.
No, and I did get an estimate on what we should have reserved in the sewer.
At some point, I would be willing to think about using whatever is in the reserve for the sewer fund to complete, if we had, needed to complete these projects, and then putting the user fees up.
Well, when you say these projects, you mean specific sewer projects?
Oh, of course, of course. Down pump station and, and the Hershey's Mill.
Oh, sure. Estates, yeah. Absolutely. I mean, that's, that's, that, that, that fund is available for that, that, but that's one of the questions about sustainability of the fund and
Well, that's, that's why I'm suggesting.
Getting into about the sewer.
That's why I'm suggesting higher user fees.
Yeah, that's, that's why it's there. Yeah, yeah. And again, we come back to the Hershey's Mill Estates. Thank goodness for the ARPA money because we would be going after more debt, or, 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 or making it a decided transition or transfer from our general fund to sewer fund.
And we, and we do have almost a million dollars additional in those local gaming grants that the state had. So we don't know yet if we're going to get any of that, but those are for.
That might be a bonus if that comes out. Yeah. So, alright, so I, why doesn't Dave carry on with the, the, because you, you're ultimately going to get to some scenarios, et cetera.
Yeah, let's go take a look there.
Let's go take a look.
So last year, I did not include some what-ifs, and it was requested to do so. So to be fiscally responsible, I need to lay out some possible ways to try to get back to our financial policies. If we, this is assuming that we had waited until twenty twenty-five to increase by point three mills. That would be a hundred and sixty thousand times three for revenue. So you can see in the projected after-tax.
Can you tell us how much one tenth of a mill is, please?
Dollar-wise, to the taxpayer, an average on a two hundred and fifty thousand dollar assessment is twenty-five dollars.
Per tenth of a mill? Per year? Per year. Yeah, so if, if, if the millage increased another mill, on the average assessment of two hundred and fifty thousand, it would add two hundred and fifty dollars to the tax bill.
Yeah.
So if you've got a, a home that's assessed two hundred and fifty thousand, you're currently paying two hundred and ninety dollars because it's one point two five mills, you would add another two hundred and fifty dollars to that if you increased it from one point two five mills to two point two five mills. So you'd go from two hundred and eighty-five dollars to whatever it is, five hundred and fifteen.
But each tenth is about twenty-five dollars.
Yes.
Yes. And, and that's yearly.
That's the annual, that's right. The annual tax bill would go up by that amount.
And the problem is that I referenced earlier that Philadelphia is increasing the real estate assessment every year by almost ten percent. So instead of a millage increase, they're increasing assessment and getting increases. We can't do that in East Ocean Township.
Because the county.
The county has to do that, and they won't do it because they found out that it's going to cost them forty-six million dollars to do it. So the assessments aren't going to change, so the only way to get revenue is to increase the millage on.
That's right.
That's the only lever, tax-wise, that we have currently.
Yeah, I think the last county tax assessment was, changed, was ninety-six, ninety-four. I knew it was right around then, and so it's a monumental task.
Because we, we have so many new, I mean, we are rolling and building permits, and you know people, I mean, looking at what the homes are selling for now, it's just completely outpaced.
It would be a revolution, yeah.
Dave, to repeat, a tenth of a mill across the whole township is a hundred and sixty thousand dollars?
Yeah. That's the rule of thumb.
Sorry, I just wanted, I just wanted to make sure that was clear. Thank you.
So taking this tack and doing a step-up approach, which you can see there's still a large impact if we continue. This is assuming that the projections, nothing else changes except this small lever being pulled for the point three mill increase. And then in twenty twenty-eight, another point three five increase, and then another point three five in twenty thirty. And you can see our, our ending fund balance is still negative in twenty thirty, twenty twenty-nine, we're still negative. So stepping it up like that, while much more tolerable, I'm sure, for residents, unfortunately does little to assist you in the balance preservation. Any other questions on this one? Let's go to the second scenario. The second scenario, I, I took an all-in approach. If we let it slide until twenty twenty-five, and in pro, and included a full one point zero mill increase, as Mike had just alluded to, the impact of about two hundred and fifty dollars a year to the average single-family household. That would, you can see the impact on the balances after that tax increase, and how you stay at five and a half million in twenty twenty-five, and you're still there in twenty thirty-one. And that's just in the general fund.
I have a very random question for you, Dave.
Sure.
What is the, we know what the average tax bill is for East Ocean Township based off of this for property tax. What's the average Westchester School District? Tax bill? Compared to Millage, yeah. Or, yeah, Millage.
I forget what the millage.
I think it's seven point something.
No, that's the, that's the, yeah, we're talking about the school district, which is like seventeen, nineteen, twenty-three. I forget what the millage is.
Thank you.
But the average tax bill here in the township for the school district is probably around, I'm going to say, close to five thousand dollars annually. I, I just, that's a really rough for anybody that's listening, but it's, because I know that our house is assessed similar to two fifty. And I know our, our school tax bill this year will be around five thousand dollars with the two percent discount.
I just looked it up. The Westchester Area School District millage is twenty-two point zero six mills.
I thought, I, that's what I said, twenty-two, twenty-three.
Yeah, it's really good to point that out because the tax, when people think of taxes, they think of any tax or all taxes lumped together. Our tax for real estate property tax is infinitesimal out of that total.
Well, that's right, and, and that.
And it's funding actual services that you see every day.
And folks, as we, as, as you see these projections here, it's inevitable that taxes are going to have to be increased, and what, and the decision is going to be when we're, when we're going to do it is this current board or the next board with whoever is sitting on it in two or three years. And the education of our residents will be essential to put them in, put it in perspective, like the school district taxes compared to, you know, and, and the service profile that we have here, what we are providing. And for, for instance, for, for us as a household, the Lynch household, our kids never, never did go to the school district, never went to the Westchester Area School District. That was a decision we made. But, you know, they, 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 they benefited from us, and, 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 of course, you're going to hear the same kind of thing from residents of Hershey's Mill, the villages of Hershey's Mill. So it will be in, in, just paramount for us to educate our residents months in advance of anything we decide to do, to give them various updates, discuss these things, put it out there, have question and answers, have this transparent. It's a big deal because we haven't increased taxes ever since the inception of it, going back, what, twenty-one years or so now? Three, okay, so. But the reality is, if anybody has been watching our municipal government with any kind of attention, and they put it in perspective, the, the rest of their lives and their household, they see that it's inevitable that, that taxes will have to go up here. I've often said that when Verizon raises its rates, Pico, you name it, we have very little ability to input. We just say, damn it, we're, we gotta pay it. That's the way it is. You want the, you know, some things you absolutely have to have, like electric, but Verizon cable services, et cetera.
Well, I thought Cody had a pretty interesting point on the phone with me where, if you put the two hundred and fifty dollars in perspective, that could be five-dollar coffee at Starbucks once a week.
Yeah, yeah. Now, of course, we want, we want to be, we want to be very you know, measured in our, in our education of our residents. We have very smart, well-educated residents. But I think that's to our advantage if we provide good information because they will understand the numbers. I think what I've seen from Dave and the projections he's put together, and I've done them myself, so I, I, I know these kind of numbers. They, the numbers seem pretty reasonable. Ten years out, it's a, it, it, you know, it's a soft palate that you're working with ultimately. But it, but it is based with some, some, some real data that has, has value, and I think that, that we, we have to be future-looking, and that's what this is all about. And I, I, for one, as a board member, I don't want to get to a precipitous situation where our fund balance is, I may be off the board at that point in time, but where our fund balance is starting to approach that twenty percent, and then we get into a, a critical situation and, 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 and things get a little bit nutty. So I think a measured approach is what the board has to think about.
If you're off the board, Mike will probably raise taxes just in your neighborhood.
That's all right. I've been, I've been telling the, the governor of Pennsylvania and the legislators that they should have been, they should have increased the state tax for a long time ago, instead of just holding back. And I think, I think smart governors, governorship, whether it's a governing board here or elsewhere, has to be, have the fortitude to do those things.
I agree with that, but I would like to see us look in the other direction, too. Last year, David asked for a balanced budget so we could really have a feeling of what could or couldn't be cut. And I would really like to see a balanced budget as one of the things we have to work with, a tool that we have to work with, and then go from there.
I, I look at this as, as kind of a sausage-making thing, right? So we only have certain sources of revenue, right? And, and we have some very healthy surpluses. We've got surpluses in some of our enterprise funds that are dedicated. We use grants, we can borrow, and so when we talk about taxes, everyone's kind of freaking out about taxes. But there are so many other, you know, we can cut costs, we can get grants, we can, you know, have a modest increase. I mean, in nineteen, if we can't explain why we need a slight millage increase after nineteen years of no increase, then there's something wrong with that thing. I mean, there's something wrong with me if I can't explain that to somebody.
I agree, I agree.
So, it, it, so, you know, I, I think it's just a matter of a recipe of using all of those sources of, of funds and controlling expenses, a lot of moving parts, but, you know, very doable, I think, so.
Yeah, these are in a vacuum. It's a good point, David. We obviously take fiscal responsibility very, very seriously. We had a nice surplus last year of six hundred thousand something before we transferred it to other funds we put aside for infrastructure sustainability. We're still projecting out seven years, even though our operating reserve was cut in half, because we put that in the infrastructure sustainability. Okay. So, so, yeah, we would look at, we're going to look at cost-cutting, we'll look at it year by year. This is really a jumping-off point for twenty-three to where we're going to get that six hundred down to zero.
Yeah.
Is it gonna, is it gonna hold next year? I don't know, but we're going to shoot for it, for sure, whether we have a tax increase or not, so.
And I get concerned about, you know, a lot of people come to meetings and we get a lot of letters complimenting us on the services that our public works and the access to our facilities and our parks and how wonderful they are. And they love living in East Ocean Township. Well, there's a cost to that, you know, we have to provide those services, and, and you can only cut so much, and, and somehow the board's going to have to, to find that point where you're cutting fat and you're into muscle and into bone, and that, I, I just think, you know, we have to deliver what our residents expect for the quality of life and services that they have in East Ocean Township, and sometimes, you know, a tax increase might be necessary to, to maintain that level of service, so. One of the concerns I have.
What, what I would like to suggest to the board and, and to Dave and to Derek is that we continue on a, we make perhaps a monthly basis as we move forward this year on taking some time from each of our meetings to continue to discuss this with maybe new information they're presenting, to, to continue to build publicly for anybody who's listening this conversation as we move towards that, whatever scenarios or whatever path we choose. Ultimately, whether, whether it's a twenty-three budget or down the road, and we continue to educate ourselves as we're educating our residents on what's going on. It's what my suggestion is, we keep this, my past experience, we kept it on the agenda, budget update, what, what do you know, et cetera. So that would be my suggestion, that we keep this alive as an ongoing.
And that wouldn't impact what we're, because I, I was planning on doing the September like we did last year, as far as a busy September, basically every Tuesday, in order to go through the budget, fun by fun.
The workshops.
But, so this wouldn't impact that then, correct?
Correct. This, this is just, there's further updates that we talk about. We, we, you know, we have it as an agenda item. Talk, let's, let's talk in July, let's talk in, in August.
One thing I know, David mentioned bonds. I would like to avoid bonds, if we can. I would just.
Barring last resort.
Yeah, exactly. I just feel like.
And if we were going to do it, I wish we would have done it in twenty seventeen.
Exactly, yeah.
But see, I, you know, I know that we're talking about the gen, our, our general fund and our general budget. I know that we're not talking about municipal authority, and that's a concern that I have because that we have significant debt there, and we're going to have to raise rates, and that's, we can't do, we can't do too much at one time, and I'm really concerned. So next month, let's talk about the municipal authority.
Yeah, in July, we have to do a review of the sewer rate calculation.
Okay, that would, maybe that would be a good agenda. Rates are going to have to go up based upon the infrastructure that, that we're, we're warning here.
Yeah, this past month, I presented to municipal authority some information.
A really important discussion because we're not going to have any choice but to raise rates. We're going to have to do that. It's not popular. We have options. We could sell the municipal authority to a third party. That would bring in small influx of money in, and it's, it's not the, it's not the loaves and the fishes, though.
That's exactly.
That's the problem. It's not the loaves and the fishes, and there are more problems with that transfer of that transfer.
Yeah, we currently, talking with municipal authority, we, we probably having Public Works do so much sewer repairs, we are paying a third of what we would have to pay.
Absolutely.
And that's just one piece.
People have, and, and people have had no idea how, how well this municipal authority has been run up to this point. I mean, it continues to be run by exceptionally brilliant people, and they're free.
They're volunteers.
Volunteers, and they have tried to keep the rates low, and we need to, we need to, we need to pay the bills.
Well, the municipal authority hasn't tried to keep the rates low.
The board's that have been.
We've got two point six million dollars in two projects, and then I heard about the, you know, the great work that Public Works did to kind of save a neighborhood on Saturday. But my question was, what was the root cause of that?
Right.
Blockage, was that another collapsing, you know, main, or was it just a, you know, a tree roots or, you know?
Yeah, I mean, it's a good point. I don't know the specifics of that one, but I know a lot of times, we never find out, and that's, that's a concern.
It can be as simple as a, a, a couple of diapers that were thrown down the toilet.
I was going to say, a lot of times, a lot of times.
It can be that simple.
It's an illicit, it's an illicit.
Discharge of some type.
Yeah, and I know that Mark did go and talk with, somebody was more promulgating throughout the neighborhood of the types of things that they should avoid. So one of the, one of the residents actually kind of took Mark's lead and you're supposed to. kind of took Mark's lead and you're supposed to partner with him to kind of educate people that
But, you know, Michelle, you're right.
Going down there, this type of thing.
Next month, we do talk about the, or the next meeting, we talk about the, uh, as, as far as we understand, municipal authority will have to do what they have to do, but, um, ultimately on the rates.
We're going to have to look at that.
Work on that. You guys, I know you have your hands full with, uh, with, with this financial.
It's a lot, it's a lot of stuff, it's a lot of stuff to comprehend, and it's a lot of stuff that we have to explain to the residents, and, um, I appreciate this first pass.
Okay.
I, I think it was done exceptionally well, um.
Yeah, thank you.
Now, I, I, do we have any? Do we have any public, do we have any, any other matter?
I, I just have one, um, other matter, I think it's important to, uh, note in our minutes and announce to the public, um, that Energy Transfer has notified the Public Utility Commission that they are not going to be putting natural gas liquids under pressure through Mariner One. They have ceased activity in Mariner One. And, uh, they're not using the term decommission, but right now it's filled with inert, um, gases, and they're not going to be pushing NGLs through Mariner One. Um, they're reserving the right to maybe repurpose that, but the information I had is that, uh, they don't think it's appropriate to be using it for NGLs. The stated reason was they have concerns over ground cover in both, uh, the land and underwater and some issues with cathodic protection. I suspect that under John, Judge Barnes's, uh, order, um, the end-of-life study that was required might be an issue with a pipeline that was put in the ground in nineteen thirty. I always wanted to take a nineteen thirty-two Ford and drive it up to the PUC and say, this is the technology that was available when that pipeline was put in the ground, being used for NGLs. But I think it's important, uh, and this is a direct, or maybe, uh, so, uh, ET would say it's an indirect, but I would say it's a direct result of the work of the Safety Seven that was supported by this board, um, through letters and, and, um, confirmation of
And contributions.
Of their activity and a financial contribution, so I want to thank the board, um, and thank our, uh, our Pipeline Task Force for the work, uh, with Safety Seven to, uh, um, I think, uh, have a, a effect on this decision, so I want to let everyone know that.
Yeah, good.
Good, that's, that's great. Any other matter?
I just want to apologize for the technical issues, uh, it was the, the link, uh, it was a bad link on, on, on the website, so I will get this up on YouTube ASAP tomorrow so that anybody who gave up, uh, and didn't come back can view it right away, apologize.
Thank you.
I'll make a note on the, uh, the pension resolution that we did, the, uh, the pension audit went smoothly. We, uh, we did have two verbals that, um, after discussion with our actuary, were reversed by the auditor general, so we're good.
Good.
And, um, are there any public comments? Um, are there any public comments in the Zoom room?
There was a chat comment by Brian Novak, who said, I am a hundred percent for moving forward with increasing taxes for our township. That was the only comment from a chat.
We'll make sure Brian gets it.
I don't see, I don't see any hands raised.
Uh, no other hands are raised, thank you, Brian. Um, no liaison reports, correspondence, none, and I guess that brings us to our last.
Madam Chair, I would like to make the motion to adjourn.
I second the motion.
Those in favor adjourn.
Alright.
Hi.
John, would you say that?